Of the Assistant Chief Executive and City Engineer, it's the quarterly report of the Active Travel Programme. And as per group leaders this afternoon, it was also agreed to take item 22, Report 218 of the Assistant Chief Executive and City Engineer Quarterly Report of the Traffic Department. May I get a proposer and a secondor for both of those reports? councillor McAdam, and could I get a secondor as well, please? councillor McGrathen, thank you.
Gormargat, councillor Deirdre Heaney, sixty seconds on the clock.
Caoheirle, or Lord Mayor, can I ask two questions? One, when is the Clontarf to City Centre cycleway going to be completed? Will it be completed before the local elections? And two, why is it that each time that the Clontarf to City Centre cycleway, this Clontarf to City Centre project is mentioned, that no mention is made of, I think it's, is it six K of replacement drainage infrastructure as part of that project? Thanks, Lord Mayor.
Gormargat, councillor Deborah Byrne. You're on mute, councillor Byrne.
Sorry for that. One of the most frequent requests I receive from constituents is regarding bike bunkers. And in 2021, I know it's planned to tender for 350 bike bunkers. And to date, I think there was a report in April that we have 12 bike bunkers so far. So, and mostly we've had an access to a bike bunker, I will agree that it's worked really well, and we've proven that we can deliver bike bunkers ourselves during that pilot programme. And can this be achieved again? And, you know, it is particularly pertinent and urgent in the light of the climate crisis that we encourage cycling in the city centre. Thank you.
Gormargat, councillor Dermot Lacey.
Lord Mayor, welcome to the progress on the Dáda Greenway, but too much to my surprise and everybody else's surprise, as I looked through the railings the other day, a car park that was never part of the agreed plans has suddenly materialised where there was meant to be a pocket park. Can the manager clarify where this car park arose and why? What deal was done with the IRFU? And if you have entered into such deals, will you honour the deal that was done with the residents of Eglington Terrace to put a new fencing in along that stretch? If the IRFU got an extraordinarily valuable car park, at least they can do, or we can do, or somebody can do, is to replace the fencing. But where on earth did this car park come from? It was never, ever, ever, ever part of the proposals put before the Dáda Greenway committee.
Gormargat, councillor Vincent Jackson.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, just in relation to the plans here ahead of us tonight, is there any way of expediting the Chapel Isar to Houston Station part of the plan, like post, what, 2026, 2027? Just our part of the city, Lord Mayor, I think you'll agree with me, seems to have been forgotten about. And notwithstanding the fact we're a bit further, so it's not as advantageous to cycle into the city for, most of my neighbours around here are in their 50s and their 60s and now in their 70s and their 80s, so they'll never be going on a push bike into the city centre unless somebody's on a, I don't know, a tricycle or whatever, a tandem. But I'm just saying, this part of the city seems to be forgotten about, so I would look forward to plans in the future, how we can, you know, make up and ensure that the working class areas are also treated in a fair manner. Thanks, Lord Mayor.
Gormargat, councillor Ray McAdam.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Just across the two reports, what is the status of the safety audit along the North Strand Road that I understand was recently undertaken? What are the preliminary findings and what are the longer term actions and next steps? Can we get a detailed works programme for quarter four regarding the East Coast Trail North Phase One? Can Andy or John confirm that the consultation reports for the North Circular Road scheme at Handlands Corner and between Amiens Street and the Big Tree and our Set Street will be included in the Central Area Committee agenda this month? What does the indicative new or next pedestrian crossings programme look like? Have you any sort of ideas where you want to include? We in the Central Area had a number of discussions now, where issues being raised with us about the deadline of our lack of funding for tag implementation of tag issues. Can we get some clarity on that? And then finally, when will work prep start on the, do you know what?
Gormargat. I'm going to bring the manager in now for that first round of questions, and then I'll bring in another few speakers afterwards.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. councillor Heaney's question regarding the completion of the Clontarf project. We're reasonably confident that it will be completed by the end of the first quarter of next year. John will take a question from councillor Byrne and councillor Lacey. We're looking at the fencing that you mentioned. There's difficult negotiations, there were difficult negotiations to get lands from the IRFU, and this is tied into the lease. I can give you a bit more detail on that in due course. councillor Jackson, in terms of Chapel Isar. You know, we review the programme all of the time, we particularly review it every 12 months, and if there's any prospect of bringing a particular project forward, we always look at that, but it depends on availability of funding. And also, we're very much aware of ensuring a good geographical spread of this network throughout the city, so I'll explore that further. I will, we will forward a detailed programme, councillor McAdam, on the East Coast Trail presently. I'll have to come back to you on your question on the audit. And the Handlands Corner, there's no reason why that shouldn't be included as well, so thank you.
Lord Mayor, can I get an actual answer to the question I asked? Where did the proposal for a car park that was never part of the...
Dermot, they haven't finished.
Well, no, he would be answered, but he said with reference to councillor Lacey's questions. And will the second part of the issue that I raised be answered? The commitment that was in the decision of the city council that a new fence would be put along the side of active grounds as part of this package? If the IRFU is extraordinarily well aware of the situation...
Okay, no, Dermot, I've let you come in, manager.
Can we have an answer to both of them?
Lord Mayor, Lord Mayor, it's Deirdre here answering my question.
Hang on, Deirdre, please, please. I'll let you come back in in a second, your hand is up, but please, the managers haven't finished answering questions before everybody starts jumping in.
But he did answer mine, he's forgotten mine, I think.
Councillor Lacey, I have to go through that in more detail, you know, because first of all, I want to be accurate in what I say, and I need to interrogate the lease documentation further, and I'd be in touch with you presently to explain that further.
Is there any reason tomorrow that I might have an answer?
Yes, yeah.
Lord Mayor, I'll just deal with councillor Byrne's question on bike bunkers. There was a report given to the recent SBC on how bike bunkers are going to be progressed, and we have to procure an entity to actually supply and maintain and operate that bike bunker programme. And we're looking at about 300 bunkers being installed between now and about 2026, so it's about 100 a year. The councillor McAdam on the pedestrian crossings programme, I think there's 17 pedestrian crossings being constructed at the moment. We have to look at the details of the programme for next year, and that will obviously be announced to the council when that's ready. The tag issues on funding, I'll have to come back to you on that, councillor, in writing.
Lord Mayor? Lord Mayor?
Yeah, Deirdre, the management is going to come in now.
Yes, councillor Heaney, the drainage works actually are detailed and referenced in our report. We may put further detail in in due course, but was there another element to the question that I'm missing?
No, I can see it in your report, 5.1 on the agenda. It talks about everything, but it does not mention the drainage infrastructure, which is a huge part of the project, and I need to be able to say that to residents because of the huge, you know...
Okay, Gormargat, Deirdre, Gormargat.
Thanks, Andy, thanks, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Keith Connolly.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. Three queries. The Thingless to the Closter cycle routes has dropped off completely, what's the latest on that in relation to the Thingless Village improvement scheme or the Five Arm Junction? Public Reps received an update about six months ago on that. In the agenda there states the report is due at the end of September. Is that report now complete? And will there be an element of the public consultation on removing one of the junction arms as was proposed last time? And then the Thingless roundabouts scheme, like it's gone on nearly 15 years, I think. Public consultation 2019, a million euros secured from the NTA in 2020, and here we are, three years later, where I think it's a towards a drawing, so just very, very frustrating. Two very, very unsafe roundabouts, so is that all on track to start next year?
Gormargat, councillor Christie Burke.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. Could I ask the manager, when will DCC get the storage site back on the Ready Mix East Wall roadside that's been used at the moment? When will the North Strand works be complete? And will the manager consider not removing the three bus stops from North Strand Road in the plan as he's creating hardship to elderly people in that particular area, and they really have militated strongly against any proposal to remove the bus stops? Thanks, Lord Mayor.
Gormargat, councillor Neillery.
Gormargat, hard where, absolutely support Christie on that request for the bus stops. My own mother, who's 88, now has to walk over a hill to try and get back home. She's just given up going into town, her little trips, et cetera. But just to ask the manager specific in relation to Clontarf to City Centre, we had a consultative meeting on Friday at which I raised, and I know was raised here in the chamber, the question of compensation for the businesses along the route. I recently did a survey of 50 businesses from Amiens Street to Malahide Road. 90% of them are down in their footfall and their revenue, between 10% and 75%, average 31%. And then at the meeting, I was told that there's some art installation fund of about 2-300,000. And I'm just wondering, is the manager happy that the livelihoods of people and businesses going out, going bust, is going to be, takes second place to having some art installation? When we're talking about people's livelihoods here. Thank you.
Gormargat, councillor Moore Devine.
Gormargat, hard where. Thanks to the Active Travel and the reports. I've just a few questions. The traffic management system in the Kilmainum in Chicoor and the old Kilmainum area is just chaotic and quite pollutant as well, just sitting in cars for ages. There's very simple things that could be done immediately. I know the reconfiguration of the road there at Herberton, at the Herberton Bridge, when you turn right onto, or seeking to turn right onto Dolphin Road, backs up right down to the Rialto, roundabout and right along the South Circular Road. Just urgently, can you just put in a filter, a right filter, please? It may help the situation. Also, how do I go about requesting a report on a one-way system on Kilmainum Lane? If you could stop the right turn into Kilmainum Lane from the South Circular, and how do you request that?
Gormargat, councillor Devine. Councillor Janet Horner.
Oh, thanks.
Thanks. Quickly run through them. Just a logistical level, there seems to be some different updates provided in the CEO's report and in the Active Travel report, so they're just like, if we could try to get consistency in the updates and ensure all the information is in one place, that would be really helpful. Zebra crossings, we have approval for 10 in the city. Where are they at? Why aren't we seeing them rolled out? Can we get some increased escalation in that? Footpath allocation, I noticed there was 18 kilometres, again, the CEO reported notes, for footpath repairs this year. We need to see a lot more money going to footpath upgrades, not just on the repairs and maintenance side, and it'd be great to see a lot more of that coming through in the NTA allocation this year, and I'd love to see that given a little bit more priority. The NCR, it was, the consultation started on the 10th of December last year, and we still haven't got the report and that consultation. Again, the pace of some of this stuff is just very, very slow. And then just finally, the Point Junction, the consultation is closing it, but what's the next step and what's the timeline for that? Thanks.
Gormargat, manager.
I have my hand up there.
Manex, they're after taking on four or five speakers, they'll give a response, and then I'll take more questions.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. So regarding councillor Connolly's question, Figless to Closters, to commence, the concept will be developed in detail in the next three to four weeks. Also, Figless Village, the Rapid Build Options report is in progress, and we're reviewing it currently with the NTA. We will need to confirm funding from the NTA for next year, which hasn't happened just yet, but we'd be quietly confident that this will be a feature. Councillor Burke, the storage site is, the lease expires on the end of this year. The, I'll have to explore the question on the bus further, but the whole rationale for all of these bus locations was outlined in a report previously, and that relates to councillor Ring's question as well. The matter of compensation, which is a matter, I think, for others in the organisation, but we have explained that previously on previous occasions as well. The traffic, councillor Devine, the Kilmainum issues, we know that it was a little bit haphazard at the beginning, I do understand it's settling, but we will explore further for sure, and we constantly will monitor and tweak it where we can as well. And the, yeah, the North Circular, councillor, yourself, sorry. We will explore the getting that report out pretty shortly, I think it's evident.
Lord Mayor, I'll just cover councillor, I think that's on pedestrian crossings. There is a list of pedestrian crossings there that we can circulate, I think it may be in the management. It's in the report. It includes the zebra crossings as well, yeah. I'll have to come back to you on the actual cost for the footpath renewal works that we're actually carrying out this year, so I'll just confirm that in writing.
Councillor Larry O'Toole.
Lord Mayor, never answered the North Strand Road I asked.
North Strand Road for councillor Burke. Can you just repeat the question very briefly, Christie?
I just asked him, Lord Mayor, when it would be complete, when would works be complete?
By the end of the first quarter.
Gormargat, councillor Larry O'Toole.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. To cover the thing, previous speakers, and I'm concerned, as I've mentioned, about the disappearance of some of the bus stops on the new Bus Connect. I know three, one on Fairview, one on Amiens Street, and one on the North Strand. Now, and I'm just concerned, is that going to continue all the way up the Malahide Road on that route? I don't think any bus stops should be taken out of use, as councillor Ring says, you know, especially the population in some of the areas need the bus stops as near to them as possible. I'm worried that they're trying to create a kind of a Lewis stop scenario, where you'll only have a stop every half mile or something, and it's not good enough for, we're trying to encourage people to use buses, but also people that need to use buses. Now, I know what I'm talking about on that route, I use that bus route several times a week, and I see these things in front of me, bus stop disappearing, and, you know, we need to really check that.
Gormargat, Larry.
I have another transport...
Councillor James Gagin.
Can I come through under the transport...
Councillor James Gagin.
Transport report.
Councillor James Gagin.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor, and thanks to Andy and John for the reports. Look, there's a lot of doing in this report, from what I can see in the areas that we represent, so I'm delighted to see a lot of the pedestrian crossings going ahead in Rannella, and to see, and I've witnessed it myself, though I agree with what Dermot's saying about getting those fences painted on Eglington Terrace, but the work's been done on the Dáda Greenway. What I just ask, I just urge you to continue with the, don't get sidetracked, there's a million projects on this list, you know, just keep going with the Dáda Greenway project, please don't get sidetracked. That'd be my strong expression. But in the Dáda Greenway report, you say that everything will be done by October on the stretch of Anglesey Road, except for the pedestrian crossings across Donnybrook Road. And you might just give us an indication of when you expect to have that pedestrian crossings on Donnybrook Road? And could you give us then, what's the next Dáda Greenway step? What's the next consultation? Which phase?
Gormargat, councillor Gagin, councillor Donna Cooney.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just at the Clontarf Baths, I look for an update every single meeting, and I've been told I get a written report and nothing happens on it. We got the money from the NTA a number of years ago. Have we lost that funding now to do the works there? The art percent project, very happy with that, it's something I followed through to make sure we'd get that from the NTA, 100,000. I know Lyle Ring has a problem with it, it's a specific funding that's for our 1% art projects. It'll mean that those artists can possibly work with the communities, whatever, it'll be a great benefit, and we should look for more from the NTA for our projects across the way, I think we should have actually got more than 100,000 for that. Santry Greenway, could we have an update on that? The Coolock to Vernon Avenue, the consultation finished on the 25th of July, and it was extended. You know, I'm just wondering where we are with that exactly, because I thought we would be, you know, progressing with that at that point. Great that you've got a new team. The Safe Routes to School, what we need is more pedestrian crossings. We haven't got any in the North Centre Lane. Have any of those zebra crossings?
Councillor Catherine Stocker.
Can we have a zebra crossing in the North Centre Area?
Gormargat, councillor Cooney, Catherine Stocker, please.
Thank you, Chair. Just two things. Firstly, I'd like to support what councillor O'Toole was saying in relation to bus stops. There just simply are not going to be enough bus stops along North Strand there, where that's the, and I'm massively supportive of the C2CC project generally, but that is a significant problem with it, and I think it's one we're going to have to address. And the other thing quickly is, these 300 bike bunkers, can I be told how we're deciding where they go? Was it being decided by the Transport SBC, by the area committees, by the Active Transport Department? I would hope the councillors have some input into it. I personally would love to see some in Marino, which has, you know, reasonably small houses slash gardens and very high cycling uptake. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Gormargat, manager.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. Councillor Gagin's question, the Donnybrook Two Crossing will be constructed over the next two months, and hopefully completed, will be started within the next five to six weeks, and hopefully completed well before Christmas. Again, the bus stop question, a number of councillors have mentioned it, you know, we have a very detailed rationale for the proposed and the location, existing and proposed locations that are out there at the moment, including councillor Stocker's question. The 1% for art, of course, always applies, and we will exploit that fully with the NTA where we can at all times. And I'll get something further on the Santry Greenway, because that's been driven by another department. And the Clontarf Projects, the Clontarf Baths as well are, that process, that project is underway in terms of acquiring land, et cetera, and exchanging with the owners.
Lord Mayor, I'd just like to confirm that we will be consulting on the, as councillor Stocker's question, consulting on the bike bunker's locations, and we'll be coming back to city councillors on that. I take the pines to councillor Cooney on the Safe Routes to School. We'll actually come back to you just on the pedestrian crossing location, which may have to be included in next year's programme.
Councillor Flynn.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Yeah, thank you very much indeed. I mean, it's safe to say that much of the chevile look at the city is as a direct result of much of this work that's going on within the city. And I mean, I certainly want to see a city with lots of cycling infrastructure, but the state of some of the works is to be desired, and the level of plastic that's now around the city streets is simply appalling. I think it's also safe to say that this report should be the NTA report, considering that the NTA underpin all the salaries for those who are working on the Active Travel. And finally, what I'd like to ask mister, the manager, is that bearing in mind the whole of the, of like, you know, climate justice, when are these infrastructures going to be employed, you know, without fail, to working class areas and also to blocks of flats, where there is simply no infrastructure whatsoever to park a bike or cycle a bike? And also, I think to the point that councillor Ring made, I think certainly a compensation, a sum measure of compensation should be made to those businesses that have lost their income, and indeed to councillor Jackson's...
Gormargat, councillor Clare Byrne.
The bodyist.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Mignon, for the report. It's so great to see it just getting bigger and bigger every month. Couple of questions, just on the bike bunkers. My understanding was the original plan was that they would be focused between, within the canals and the city centre, and just wondering if that's still the plan? On the Dáda Greenway, great to see progress on this, and I'm just wondering when doesn't city council will open up conversation with Miltown Golf Club with regards to possibly keeping the route off-road? And on the Fitzwilliam cycle route, are we going to see works actually happening before the end of this year? Like, this is five years in the making to deliver one kilometer. I appreciate temporary measures are in, but like, to complete one kilometer of cycle routes is, just doesn't inspire much confidence in delivery, but thank you for the report.
Councillor Mihael Matouk.
Gormargat, hard where. I want to ask about a project that is supposed to be, to relieve traffic and provide active transport in our area. It's the Belmain Main Street, it's the continuation of the road from Clongriffin Station right up through Clongriffin and Belmain, a very important spine route. But the Belmain end is still not open, there's no prospect of it being open at the moment. Now, we got a very unsatisfactory report at a community forum recently, and it seems to be contradictory. On the one hand, it's saying this road will be opened when the NTA receives planning approval for Bus Connects Route One. But it also says that the road in question, still unopened, is being used essentially as a service road for builders who are going to be there till 2025. So local residents are extremely annoyed that, you know, effectively what they're being told is, this what should be a public road is going to be used as a service road for construction. That's entirely unsatisfactory.
Gormargat.
So it's either dependent on the NTA planning approval or it's not.
Councillor Tara Dacey.
Thanks, Lord Mayor, and thanks Brendan and John. It's great to see so much happening all over the city, and particularly my own area in the south-east area. I really welcome school mobility, that consultation piece that's due to happen in the last quarter in Harald's Cross. Harald's Cross and the Crumlin Road are two of the most, I suppose, talked about areas in terms of traffic at our local area committee meetings. So if there was any opportunity for a zebra crossing at either, I'd be very happy to see that happening as well. Now, I haven't seen anything listed under the Crumlin Road, and myself and councillor Dunn have been beating this drum for quite some time, him a lot longer than myself. So I'm going to be raising the Crumlin Road at every local area committee meeting, and if we have to start, you know, raising it here as well, I'm going to do that, because we need some serious action on the Crumlin Road alongside those improvements for Harald's Cross, and I'd be really happy to see that. Thank you.
Gormargat, councillor Sophie Nicolau.
Thank you. It's good to see that the next road now will be a 24 hours bus route, but funny enough, the NTA is removing the 1368 and 69 at the same time, so I'll be urging the Minister of Council, the traffic and the active travel, to urge the NTA to keep those three routes. The Blue Bell and the Inchico Community had a successful protest at the weekend, where there was absolute chaos. I don't know how aware the Minister of Council is of the situation, absolute chaos, because the second time in a month that the Lewis is not running. So around Black Horse with a lashing rain, it was total chaos, where bus drivers were told not to take any more passengers, so just as more statement, but urging to work with the NTA on that. Thank you.
Gormargat, councillor Nicolau, manager.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. Just getting back to councillor Cooney also, to confirm that the Santry Greenway, the public consultation was held earlier in September, and currently they're collating the feedback. Just got that update for you. Councillor Byrne, in terms of the Fitzwilliam cycle route, we're finalising the business case at the moment, and expect to go to construction in January. Your other question on the Miltown Golf Club, that's a matter that will have to, you know, that can't happen too quickly until we establish our preferred option for the enduring permanent scheme along the Dáda, and to be premature to approach any of the owners at the moment until we have that considered further. Then I think the rest are for you. Sorry?
No. No. Yeah, and we've moved on from your questions. We're actually on another list since then, he came back to you on another, like, continue, manager.
That's my questions, John.
Lord Mayor, just on councillor McDonagh's question there on Belmain Main Street, I'll have to check that out, councillor, and we'll have to come back to you in writing, just to clarify those matters. I think if it's okay, Patricia Weedy will just deal with your question.
Bike bunkers, school zones, is it? Yeah. Greetings all. Just a quick response there on the bike bunkers. So the current situation is that the, there was a comprehensive review done, as you're probably only too well aware, and a report with recommendations was brought to the Transport SBC there in September, the 13th of September. So really... So really where the bike bunkers is at currently is that we will be going out to tender to the market, to the open market, to basically look to appoint a service provider from cradle to grave, if you like, to incorporate all the aspects of the bike bunker scheme in terms of the supply, the maintenance, the running, the operation. And this was, this report is actually being circulated as part of tonight's report. So if you want to have a look at the details and the recommendations. So where it's at currently is that we will be going to tender and we're currently preparing those tender documentations to move this very substantial and worthwhile project forward. The question on the school, the school zones and the front of school treatment, currently our priorities are to prioritise the List One schools that have been identified by the Department of Transport. So we have acquired a number of additional staff over the summer, which has helped substantially in progressing this and moving it forward. We have a number complete. There are, I think, three or four at least out on the street at the moment currently being constructed and a batch of them currently in the design phase. But it has to be said that we have to prioritise the List One, Priority List One schools that were identified by the department. And there's Priority List One, Priority List Two. And once we get through those, we'll start looking at some of the other locations. But as it currently stands, those are the schools that have to be completed first.
Are those two reports noted?